It's just you, Phil. You're in charge. We live.
There we go.
Can you hear us, Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect. Our College Board of Selectmen is meeting to order for December 22nd. Roll call: Donald Poole, myself, Jake Thompson, Bill Crossman attending virtually, Pam Alley is absent, Andy Doortown manager, and Elizabeth Bunker, Deputy Town clerk, taking minutes. Approve agenda. So we do have a few additions that are up there on the screen. Seven one, it looks like eight as well. There you go. I move we approve the agenda as amended. Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? Phil? You vote yea or nay, Phil?
Yeah, yea.
Okay. Minutes, approve the minutes from the December 8, 2020 meeting. Questions, comments, errors? I move we accept the minutes presented.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve and sign, treasurer's warrant number 25, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole again. All those in favor? Yes. Phil voted yea. Communications, none. Speakers from the floor. Anything? Preston? Okay, seen none. We'll go on to committee and department reports and appointments. Number AA is still engineering report.
All right, this is just a summary of the work they've done as of December 11th. And most of it you're aware of. We're just finalizing and for tonight you'll have the consideration of the design build contract with Sheridan Company for the garage. Continue to work on the bridge with JBI, the Carrying Place Bridge information to get that kind of coordination started. And this will require a fair amount of material to come back and forth or to come out, so that's kind of a big lift that we're still trying to figure out how best to get it here. And I think they're estimating like seventy to a hundred truckload of material.
There's no way they can source any of it here.
That's what we're gonna still try and figure out. Yeah, otherwise, I don't think. They've been working still with listen, some grant funding option opportunities as well for Main Street. And the harbor management plan. As far as I know, that's being worked on now as well. And the transfer station is still a piece, their component, that we've, I think, engaged them on, that we do need to get a little more information. I've asked that we have from them of their idea of cost estimates going into the budget period, so by February, we could have something that estimates cost. So we can carry that into the town meeting if we need to appropriate anything. Hopefully, that'll be forthcoming.
Question? Okay, I'm not, um. Transfer station, has it ever been looked into, just having, you know, since you have to send everything to the mainland, how much more expensive would it be to have someone just come up here and pick it up, you know? Turbicide or whatever, like one of them trucks on the mainland, is it, I mean, instead of having the property and all that stuff up there, is there any possibility to, you know, hiring someone from the mainland that comes up with a truck and does happy island one day? Or, you know, maybe you didn't, you couldn't do it that way, but, I mean, you know what I'm talking about. I mean, since you have to send everything to the mainland anyway, those trucks are a little bit smaller, they can pack on their own.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering if that was anything that's ever been studied. I'm sure it's probably not any more economical, but, I mean.
It's a good question, though, because you have to say, we already have to have trucks come out and take everything away, so.
Yeah, it meant something that they could research, or is that?
We can look at, I mean, I guess it depends on the waste streams you're looking to have collected. I mean, you're still gonna have to have our assume.
Well, like on the mainland, say, like, if you live in Portland, you put your recyclables out one day, you put your trash out one day on a certain streets, and I mean, they all have to go to Noridawar, where, I mean, I don't know where they take their trash, but, I mean, you could, you could presumably do something similar to that out here, I mean. Maybe not in the summer, you might need some more, but, I'm just wondering, like, what the cost difference is. I mean, obviously, they have those big big trucks that can do a lot like Robinson, where Rockland already picks up trash, and that's who picks up the trash on the fish pier and stuff, so.
We can look into it, I don't know.
I mean, I'm just curious if anyone's ever, I mean, I've never seen a study that's really like, I mean, if we could get rid of the dump up there and the salaries and, I mean, might save money, like, I'm sure it'll cost them about something that we should recheck into.
Yeah, we might as well check into it, but I would be surprised.
Oh, yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, my inclination said that it's significantly more expensive.
Yeah. But it's.
Maybe, no, maybe not.
It's still not, it may still work.
You'd, yeah, you could probably eliminate some employees, I guess.
I would think that we brought up before, maybe getting.
But I mean, if we're looking at, like, if you would expenditure to redo it, and you add that into the cost over so many years, it might be cheaper.
Right, that's true.
It's at least worth fooling around with.
Because we've, we haven't considered possibly getting our own truck, right, that we would use to go back and forth.
Yeah, we've played with that idea as well.
Because that, that way, we could bring things back that we, you know, we wouldn't have to chuck on that.
Right, but I think that besides just redoing the thing, we should look at.
Yeah, that should be.
Like a more, like, I don't know, more comprehensive studies to see, like, you know, which way we should be going.
Yeah, like you said, if we have to spend.
I'm sure it's more intensive, but I'm just saying that there's more options than having everyone go up there.
Right, and if we are gonna have to redo the transfer station, I think is, then we might as well explore that option as well, so.
Okay. Road commissioners report. Questions?
Eric?
Yes, Phil.
Did they ever, Andy, did they ever get to ventilating the gallemander wraparound?
Uh, as of Sunday, I didn't notice it, but I can double check.
Yeah, please.
What about the ball ground? Are they gonna flood that, or?
Uh, we, yeah, we plan to flood the ball ground. Dan's concern is the, if that water cold and isn't frozen, then it's creating issues, has created issues, does create issues, for the pump station that's there for the sewer, as well as the concern for that road and keeping it soft underneath when that water's all just being held back and not far enough away, so he's just trying to time it with a cold enough stretch of weather, so it's something that potentially with the rain that's coming, the fresh water, and the rain that's coming, that, there's some cold attempts after that, so it may be an opportunity to do it then.
Old business, oh, I'm sorry, it's not old business. We went, um, planning the community development report. I think Gabe's gonna take it from here.
Thank you, Andy.
Was she upstairs?
No.
Magic, I'm at home. It's all magic. So, thanks, thanks, everybody. I'm here with Matt as usual, so for those on Facebook who don't know Matt, she's our Island Institute fellow working for the town in the planning department. And so I'm gonna share just a tiny bit about downtown project funding, just to give, uh, give you an update. Matt's gonna share a tiny bit about where we're at with the Committee Best Practices and Policies Handbook. And then I'll provide updates for the Fox Island Broadband Task Force, the Community Development Corporation Committee, and then Anna Poe, who is the Vinyl Haven Community Compost Manager, is here with me to give a presentation and a report, uh, one year in, on the Vinyl Haven Community Compost Project on behalf of Waste Watchers. So I'm gonna jump in with just an update on where we're at for funding, so we, you know, this, this going after federal funds, which some of you may know this, but you know, it's definitely been a good learning experience in terms of, it's not the simple process that we have been used to with, even with the state of just getting our application in on time and all of our documents in order. This is definitely more of a relationship building process, and with these EDA funds in particular, we need to come to essentially an agreement with Alan Brigham, who is presenting our funding proposal on our behalf to the, the committee or the group that eventually decides whether we will receive the funding, so what we've had to do, essentially, this project had four components, and what you don't see here are the parking lot components, which we had revitalization of the downtown parking lot and some effort to work with the net factory property parking lot as well. We removed those two components to reduce the overall project costs of 4.128 million. And that was so we can get closer to a level of funding that EDA would be comfortable with. And that number right now, as you'll see over here, is 1.9 million. So what we've been able to do with the help of the Water District and our, a grant from Maine DOT and the 1 million that you committed back in September, we have a 2.125 million dollar match. So with the total project cost, that still leaves us $103,000 short. So the recommendation from our engineers to just keep everything on track is to work with Alan to submit this now, but we will need to be thinking about where this is coming from. One option we have, and I'll need to work out the timing and logistics of this, but we can be applying again for Northern Borders Regional Commission, MBRC, funds, which will be a April application, but it won't be a notification likely until August. So it's possible, whatever we don't get from EDA, if it's, you know, say we get 1.5, we will need to be able to come up with whatever is missing, and so potentially, the idea is that we can apply to MBRC and hope that we get that amount from them, but it might be that when we submit this application to EDA, we will need to say where this amount is coming from. So I haven't spoken with Andy too much about this so far, in terms of the details, but just something to be thinking about. So really, all I wanted to do today was to, to share with you where we're at, and that we wanna, you know, maintain the, I don't say momentum, because this has been a slow process, but the trajectory, I'll say, and also to report that we did pursue what I reported on last time, which was we were pursuing brick funding through FEMA, but we were ineligible for that funding because we do not have extensive infrastructure that would be damaged by storm surge, sea level rise, flooding, and we do not have the population numbers that would reflect what we need to see in a benefit cost analysis. So once again, because we are small, we are not eligible. Any questions before I, before I move on from there?
Um. Do you have any, like, specifics about timing? Like, for example, if we don't get Northern Lights funded, or Northern Borders, sorry, funding, you know, and we're down to town meeting, you know, asking money that way, is that for annual town meeting, or are we looking at special town meeting before that?
Are you saying when we'll be notified by, about MBRC funding?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
We wouldn't get that notification until August, so the timing is, is kind of wonky.
Okay, right. So if we're talking special town meeting, we're talking next fall sometime?
Yes, but presumably, we'll be putting some more money in each reserve account, so that 103.
103, yeah, I mean, what we've been putting into our sidewalk reserve and, um. And then as they give us the road money, that would take up more than 103.
Yeah, it wouldn't, you know, the hundred, if, if we get fully funded on that EDA one, it wouldn't be that much of a lift from what we usually put in our reserves.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, that EDA 1.9, they give.
Yeah.
If we're down to 103,000, I think we're doing very well.
Yes, I mean, if, if, you know, hopefully, yeah, but, yeah.
The other, the other thing we gotta watch is that MDOT money, I know Brent and company, we're gonna look and see if we could get that potentially pushed off another year and still be eligible for that, those funds. Otherwise, it was, we need to make a start on the project before the end of December next year. And so we're hoping to be able to, to be able to tie all these together, because if we're not potentially gonna find out about Northern Borders, and that may need to be anywhere from a hundred to potentially five hundred thousand, you know, that is a big number, and so that's gonna be a big part of that project start time.
A start means shovels in the ground, or does that mean engineering?
They, the DOT is gonna wanna see construction start.
I mean, because engineering is a big part of it, I mean, you can see it at the bottom.
Yep.
Right. White projects.
So is that?
I mean, no, I'm just asking what their definition of shovel in the ground.
So some of this is about which one do you go after when, and when is it the right time to, you know, start at the application for other Northern Borders? You recall, we've done, we've tried twice so far, we've applied twice now. Hopefully, potentially, the third year with more funding behind it, if we get some approval from EDA, and if the Water District funding comes through, you know, that would be hopefully a much better application in that sense. Because I think that was one of the concerns before was, you got a very large project, and you're asking us for a small portion, you got so much still unfunded or unsure, so I think hopefully that'll, if these come through, that'll give us a lot better standing in that one.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, great, um, I'll move. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt now to share about the committee work.
Hey, everybody, I just wanted to give a quick update on the, like Gabe said, committee work that we've been undertaking the past couple months. We are in the process of drafting a policy and a best practices guide for any committee member, and at the moment, we are aiming to have a completed draft of it by the end of January, and hopefully be able to present a draft to the select board during the first meeting in February for you all to review, and, you know, the, the handbook's coming together to kind of just hammer out a definitive policy for the town, and how, you know, each, each committee member should, you know, act, and what sort of procedure they should be familiar with, if they're gonna be undertaking any sort of committee work, in addition to how committees themselves are set up by the select board, whether it's by ordinance or by some other, you know, ad hoc or specialized process. And we're working with committee chairs and other committee members on the process, and getting their feedback continually as we're going through the process, and looking forward to having a final product to present to you all. If you all have any questions, just let me know.
Hey, thanks, Matt. All right, I'm gonna, I'll go back to my screen share, Andy. One moment, please. Get this, you would think I'd have this tech down by now, but there we go. Okay, so just a quick update on where we're at with the broadband committee, and Jan Ann was hoping to be able to be here tonight to present, but she's having, guess what, internet challenges. So we, we had our first, essentially, our launch of our community broadband campaign. Again, this is what we received our grant from Maine Community Foundation to do, which is really bring, bring this question of how are we gonna do broadband on the island out to the community? So we launched that on December 3rd, and some, I know some of you are there, if I stuff Phil there. And we presented the 2020 broadband report, and we are moving into our series of community conversations. We're having the first one next Wednesday, so the benefits and challenges of building and operating a broadband network, and we're hoping to have a representative who's a select board member from the town of Bremen, who's gonna come and talk about their experience, and there was, there were a lot of naysayers in that community, and we wanted to kind of bring that conversation right up front, because I think we've talked about a lot that there's not necessarily people that think we shouldn't have broadband, but how we get there, and, you know, that folks who do have good, good internet right now, might not see the need for this to be a community project or something that the town needs to get behind, so we wanted to just kind of bring that out and talk about that, so I invite you all to to join us. It's gonna, again, be a Zoom conversation. We're gonna livestream it on the Facebook page, and again, 6:00 PM next Wednesday, and there's a link on the website to register to join that Zoom. And if you can't get there, or there's any challenge, just email me, which is gmccale@townofvinylhaven.org. So next update is the CDCC, the Community Development Corporation Committee, and as you know, you guys started this committee in, at the end of September, and we're lucky to have DW on that committee. We've had three meetings so far, and we've also had a separate gathering, which was a conversation from with Brian and Brett, who is one of the senior policy advisors for the governor's Office of Innovation Policy and the Future, and we look, we were talking about the state, state and local resilience and sustainability goals. And we will be meeting again on January 28th to really start diving in with an inventory of what is offered right now in, in our community and around our community to support our community in terms of, like, services or ways to address needs and vulnerabilities in the community, and also what is, what is not available, so we can sort of figure out where the gaps might be. I wanted to put out to you guys, and I don't know if this is a conversation you could have at a January, at a January board meeting, but I was thinking something that might be helpful for DW to bring back to the committee would be for the committee to hear from the select board based on the strategic plan that you guys developed, like, how you see this quasi municipal community development corporation meeting some of your goals, like, how do you see it as meeting some of the town goals? Because I think that would be interesting for the committee to hear, and again, I, I, I keep wanting to bring sort of a more long-term vision or high-level view to the committee, especially at the outset of this conversation with them, because I think it's important for us not to sort of immediately get in, into the weeds, but to think about the long-term vision for Vinyl Haven in terms of resilience and sustainability, and, you know, what role might this community development corporation play in that, so I'm just putting that out there as something for you to think about, and I might bring it back as a question for a January board meeting. Any questions on the CDCC? Okay, all right, well, Anna and I are then going to jump into Vinyl Haven Community Compost, if that works for everybody. Okay, so Vinyl Haven Community Compost, so really, I'm just gonna recap sort of where we started from. The, this is something we, we initially started as a, as a small pilot project in 2018. We got a seed grant from National Oh, I wanna say Natural Resource Council of Maine, all of these acronyms. So we were fortunate to get a small seed grant. We did the exact, those exact compost bins, they were, they were, they had forced air in them. We were able to collect a small amount of food scraps, and that's when we came to you with the recommendation to expand the program, sort of the next scale, moving into a program that could accommodate the whole community, so that was launched actually a year ago. And we did that with our Maine DEP grant, which we, we received, so over $20,000 worth of grant funds has funded that program. So our main goals with the program, and this is what we stated in our grant, was that based on numbers that we estimated, we wanted to, over the course of a year, we wanted to, we wanted to collect 30 tons of food scraps, but ultimately, whether we collected that or not in time, we just wanted to make sure we were building a self-sustaining or a self-supporting program, so for us, that meant to do it as sustainably as possible, and that revenue, hopefully, revenue generated would cover most, if not all, the cost of the program. So that's the, sort of the intro and the background for it, and I'm gonna turn it over to Anna to talk about the program, where it is now and what, what we've done so far. Oh, Anna, sorry, you're muted. Hang on, I can unmute you.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so our, our program accomplishments. We got the program up and running. We established a manure source. We worked with Kenny to put the totes in the best spot and establish emptying and pile maintenance. The routine of that. And managing and moving curing and/or finished compost up to the top, in part so that Kenny could keep an eye on it. We introduced the program to individuals and businesses in the community through media campaign and distributing countertop buckets. So we estimate that we have collected six and a half tons of food scraps. Certainly, that is not 30 tons. 30 tons now seems almost mind-boggling to me, but anyway. It's a great goal. So based on that six and a half tons of food scraps, we estimate that we have generated roughly 15 cubic yards of compost. This factors in about a third to a half of our curing, one of our curing piles mysteriously disappearing. Anyway, if we sold all of this compost at our first sale in the spring, which we are planning, we should bring in around $2,000, and that is a conservative estimate. I, I guess I'm sort of playing it safe with that. I feel pretty confident that we will be able to do that. And I expect to have more finished compost between spring and, and fall. The survey, we sort of hitchhiked on the swap shop survey, and my takeaway from that is that people who are not composting are not composting because they think it's a pain in the butt, smelly, and not worth the savings. So that only confirms that one of our big goals is to educate and increase participation over the next year. Let's see, I, yeah, I guess I'm ready to. Oh, yes, I have one more thing to say. It has been pointed out to us by the DEP that we are actually the only island community that is running a composting program, which is really kind of exciting, even though it has had its challenges. This is another thing that makes me feel like really pretty gung-ho about it, because because, because we're doing it. And it's kind of nice to have people from other islands starting to ask us questions about it. Not that I can always answer them, but I think that is something we can feel good about. Anyway, okay, over to you, Gabe.
Thanks, Anna. So here's some numbers, just so you guys understand our costs and where we're at. So we started out with, I believe it was $20,425, $20,425 grant. So our current balance, and this might not be totally accurate because I think we just had some expenses coming in, but it's around $9,700. Now, our program was supposed to expire this year, but we're going to receive an extension, which will take us into this time next year. So we have another calendar year to work with these grant funds. And based on that extension, we should be able to accomplish with grant funds what we need to accomplish in the coming year. So we're estimating that it's going to cost high-end $2,200 to, to go get manure and to purchase manure. We do want to see if the grant will allow us to spend $1,500 to have Kevin build us some Jersey barriers to enable us to scoop the compost and sort of create a container that's going to work a little bit more effectively. We're not sure if that is that, if that's going to happen yet, because we need to get approval. But we have that in here anyway. We have some materials for construction. We do have to, you know, repair things every now and then. So that's our budget, $1,200 for Anna's time. And then we do have money in here to, to put in another order of pails, because we do get requests for the large, the large, larger compost pails, which we are all out of. So that comes to $6,525, which leaves a grant balance of 3218, which we are thinking could go into the transfer station budget to offset some of Kenny's time. Because right now, what Kenny is doing is just including that in his regular time. He's not charging it off to the grant. It's sort of in-kind, the town's sort of offering that in-kind. So we could, we could use some of that funding. That's, that would be grant approved, because we already have money in the grant for an equipment operator. So that could go in there to offset Kenny's time. And just so you know, like this $2,200, that covers Nick's time to, or whomever from the Public Works Department who goes over to get the manure. Any questions on this, on these numbers before I go to the next number slide?
Yeah, I have a question. You said, you said the program expires this year. What is it exactly that expires?
Our access to grant funds. So we, you know, we have this balance of grant funds. And if we don't use them by the end of our grant period, they would need to go back to the state and we would lose access to them. So in order to continue having access to this funding, we have to apply for an extension.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yep. So here's some more numbers, just so you guys have a sense of, you know, what we're looking at in terms of how this compares to solid waste disposal. I, I've estimated that my time, which is also sort of in-kind as a town staffer to support this program. And mostly what I do is work with Anna on outreach. We do, I also do some grant reporting and like numbers calculations and stuff. So we're sort of estimating like a 30-hour a year. So it's like around 900 a year. We're thinking so far volunteer hours that go into this project are around 40, but we haven't had a compost sale yet. So that might bring out the need for more volunteers, so that, that number could increase. But just so you have a sense of what we're putting in for volunteer time and, or what others are putting in for volunteer time. And then the other in-kind costs that the town is putting into this program, which is, you know, I'd say $900, $1,000, depending on how, you know, how many hours are going in. But this is basically what I worked in this program for last year. So just to get a sense of what it costs to divert, because again, this program is really all about preventing us from unnecessarily shipping things off the island. So like, it doesn't make sense to ship food scrap off the island like that. It makes sense to keep it here. So we have to pay, if we had a ton of food scraps and we were shipping it off, it would cost us approximately $139 to ship it off, a ton. If we're, so this is what it costs us to, to divert a ton of food scraps based on what it costs to go get manure, the fuel for transportation for the truck, all three positions, which is Department of Public Works driver, Anna's time, Kenny's time, and then what it costs to buy manure. So the total cost, $428 a ton. And when we're looking at the, the, the net cost, we're looking at, okay, what does it cost? What would it cost us to ship it off the island as solid waste? But then we have potential revenue from our compost, the sale of our compost. So really, it comes out almost the same. It's a, it's like a $9 difference is what we're looking at. And then we do do this calculation of our carbon footprint, which is our, our carbon, carbon dioxide equivalent. So that this is the metric tons of CO2e generated. And that's we're looking at through transportation. So one of the biggest issues we have with the sustainability of the program is the fact that we're sending a vehicle off the island. We're using time, energy to get something that we essentially feel like we should be able to get here. So that's the carbon and the nitrogen that we need for composting. So we recognize that that's not very sustainable. We're trying to move away from that. But we still have a, our net tons of CO2 offset is still equivalent to not driving a car 200, 2,146 miles. So any questions on these numbers? Okay, I'm turning it back over to Anna.
Okay, I'm not muted, right?
You're not muted.
Okay. So I'm just going to repeat a little bit of what Gabe said. Sort of, I guess, hammering home that the sustainability challenge. You need to find materials to, to mix with the food scraps to turn into compost. And they need to have carbon and they need to have nitrogen. And some of these things exist on the island, but not all in one place. And we still don't quite know how much yet. So while our goal is to be as sustainable as possible and not have to get manure from the mainland, for now, manure gives us both carbon and nitrogen. It makes it possible for us to make usable compost while navigating all of the other challenges. In other words, having manure makes it easy for us to have a good recipe that, that will make us compost. If you don't have the manure, it's possible to make compost, but you have to put in quite a lot more effort to figure out an efficient recipe. And that may or may not mean using the same system that we have. So as our sort of first time out of the gate, while it's not quote unquote sustainable, it's sort of a way for us to evaluate the whole program and, and how successful it is, because we get an actual product. We also need to make sure that we can have enough manure all at one time when we need it. That's another reason that we get it from the mainland, because we can say, okay, it's time to make a new pile. It is most efficient to send the truck over and get the new pile. It's kind of a low-tech system. And again, it lets us see if it's going to work. I think it is working quite nicely so far. So we, sort of near future goal would be to streamline getting the mainland manure. We would like to increase the truckload volume. So we were doing three or four loads a year as opposed to eight or nine. Our long-range goal is to get all the carbon and nitrogen materials on the island and move from a static pile system to a different one, an in-vessel, an aerated pile, an aerated windrow. There are options, but they require time and research. So I think this system buys us time. And I also don't think that we should underestimate the effect that COVID has had on our first year of doing this. I think we would have collected more scraps. I think we're going to collect more scraps. We do want to increase participation. So we're going to look for funding as we understand what option is best for us. I'm trying to think if there's anything I am spacing here. But that is what my notes, I think I've covered everything I wanted to say. But I'm happy to answer questions about the, the mainland manure, if you guys have them, because I gotta say, that's been one of the most challenging things. Not the getting of the manure, but the explaining to the community why it makes the most sense for us to do it for now. And it does. So questions, anyone?
I have a question. You said your long-term goal, goal is to have all that material come from Vinyl Haven. How, how far out in the future do you think that is realistically?
I don't, Gabe, I'm going to sort of voice this off on you because you actually have that in your notes.
Yeah, sure. So, so we, you know, we are really looking at is like, we need to prove that this, that anything we do next that involves an investment is worth it. So we need to know that if we're going to sort of upgrade the type of system, put any more money into an investment around a system that is different than the one we have, we need to know that we're going to collect the amount of food scraps that would justify that investment. And what, what I say investment, so what we're talking about is moving to a system of composting that doesn't use as much manure. So we could ask the folks on island who have manure to use what they have. So it would require less. So the, there are different types of composting systems, like an in-vessel or an aerated windrow, that would, that would sort of change the way we compost, but would, would also allow us to use less manure and maybe other sources of carbon, like wood chips. So instead of burning brush, we might chip brush, we might make sawdust. So we're, we're, like Anna said, we're just trying to buy some time. And for us, it has to do with funding. So we really want to know what the next step is going to be. Probably by the spring, or I'd say like February, March of 2022, we should know what the next step is. Does that answer your question, Phil?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anna, am I set to move on? Okay. So just some things like for, to, to consider around this program and our, and our next steps. So, you know, when we talk about funding, we know that grant funds or in even, you know, there's some, some possibility of a private, private investment. If we're going to grow to a system that requires a larger investment, like an in-vessel system, for example, is a much heavier capital lift than an aerated windrow pile. So our DEP grants are really like $40,000 max. So, and we have to, you know, we'd have to really show that we would be worth that $40,000. So any type of growth or change in this, in this program would, could come presumably from grant funds or private investment. But it's never going to cover like what we're doing now. It's not going to cover this ongoing operating cost. So we, we sort of want to put this question out to you guys to consider. And it's not something that needs an answer now. And in fact, Anna and I were just sort of looking at it. It's sort of like, it could be a question that goes for the entire transfer station. But like, sort of what is the expectation for the compost program? What percentage of the program cost should be subsidized as opposed to supported by whatever is generated in revenue? Should it be 100% covered? Should there be some portion that's funded through taxation? But our goal really is to look at building the most sustainable program that we can. And like Anna said, we just need to buy some more time to figure out how we're going to do that. So we have, whoops, sorry, I went a little too far ahead. Our next step, so we put this out there to you, to work with us, to define what those goals are for the compost program. Is this something that the, the town wants to, to keep doing on? You know, we want to keep doing it. We don't feel like we should stop. We want to feel like this is really worth, you know, prove that it's really worth it. But in order to do that, based on our funding cycle, with the current grant we have, we will be out of funding by this time next year. We will no longer have access to those grant funds. So to support ourselves through fiscal year 2022, we calculate that we'd need to add $4,000 to the upcoming fiscal year 22 transfer station budget. We, if we're, if we're talking about generating $2,000 or more in revenue through compost sales in 2022, it could mean that the net cost of the program through taxation would be $2,000. It might even be less, depending on, you know, what our, what our costs are. So we're putting that out there because we know it's, you know, we're, we're starting to work on budget season. So I wanted to get that out, out there for you, you guys to consider. And we're, you know, our, our request really is to continue supporting the efforts of this program to help us build a sustainable compost program for Vinyl Haven. And really, you know, help us get to what this sort of ultimate solution for composting on Vinyl Haven is going to be by fiscal year 23. So that is, that is what we have for you today. Are there any thoughts or questions?
Do you have any thoughts besides COVID and why your projections are so far off from the 30 to the 6.5? Is it just general laziness of the people out here, like I think? Or is it something else?
Well, I want to say, so we base that, we base that projection off of a waste audit that was done for the state of Maine, which estimated, I think it was a high number. It was like 28% of municipal solid waste is organic content. And so we were thinking, okay, so maybe here where people do home composting, maybe it's less, you know, maybe it's 25%. And so we calculated like a 25% of municipal solid waste. We were really just sort of like grasping in the dark, doing our best guess. You know, Andy has always said, the only way we're going to know is to do an on-island waste audit. We haven't done that yet. We're not eager volunteers for it. But you know, it might be, it might be a good thing for us to consider, you know, working with a grad student or a grad program to bring that type of audit out here, so we know. I think, you know, like Anna said, what we learned in the survey is there is an ick factor. But what we also know is a lot of people compost at home. And so I think that's not to be, you know, we shouldn't disregard that. So we are still diverting, we're just not diverting through this program. So, you know, we won't, we won't really know how much we could be diverting until we do that waste audit.
And I was just going to add that I, I agree that there is a laziness factor. But I think that it is surmountable, at least for some. And that we have a lot of ideas about how to increase participation, some of which involve really working with the school, but that would be down the road. Some of which involve really working with the school, but that would be down the road. What am I saying? I guess I'm agreeing that people are lazy, but I nonetheless feel optimistic that that could change, in part because honestly, I mean, ten years ago, I was not an enthusiastic composter myself. You know, and if something was, if I found some revolting thing in the refrigerator, into the garbage it went. So I think it is possible to bring at least part of the community around. It's a good challenge.
Yeah, I never used to compost and I do it at home. And I find that it makes the trash bags weigh a lot less when you take them up there. Plus, when you have all that stuff going out to your own compost pile, if you don't get to the dump and it sits somewhere, you don't have any kind of fly, you know, maggots issue and some of it's also, I mean.
Yeah. And the thing is.
To it myself.
And you know, you can go.
It's only two dollars a bag.
Yeah. I think that transition, like, once you actually get in the habit of doing it, you don't really go back to throwing your food away ever. So that's our goals, just getting more people on board. And there, there are a lot of different ways to do it. And we're thinking very hard about how to really tackle the tough nuts.
Thanks for all the work on it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay, so appoint registrar voters.
Yeah, it's gotta be done every even year by the end of December.
Good, you did it. So if, if the board is so moved to appoint Darlene as the registrar of.
I'm looking for a point down in candidates that I can show our voters.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Paul, again.
Flacking. All those in favor? Pass anything on.
Okay, whole business, main state ferry service safety assessment. Everybody's favorite topic.
This is something I think Jake was referring to at the last meeting, the, or in between the meetings, kind of circle back on. This, for some that might recall, this was back in 2018. And out of that root risk assessment came the schedule change, back to the pre-2010 schedule. And there was a bunch of other things in there that should be considered. The, the goals of that whole risk assessment was to, again, identify the potential hazards of the ferry route specifically between Rockland and Vinyl Haven and Morse specifically, the thirty minute approach to and from Carper's Harbor, to identify any heightened risk presented during the operations after dark. Compare the risk scenarios presented during the daylight versus the nighttime, including things like skill level between the full time and, and the relief crews, acknowledging that you don't always have the consistent captain, not only that, but you'd also have potentially crew members under each captain's control that may be more or less familiar with that particular vessel or route. Exploring and recommending mitigation measures that would alleviate overall risk along the route was the final task or goal of that whole review process. So that, that happened over the course of two trips, a daytime and nighttime trip that included a couple of meetings. There were a few folks from Vinyl Haven that were included in that review team with the state DOT, the ferry service and the coast guard. Out of that came a report or some findings, the most notable of those highlighted here. We know now that the November, or November, February, the, the schedules changed. Last trip at three fifteen to four thirty. Vehicle engine off policy or coast guard regulation that's been in place for a long time was more strictly enforced, ensuring passenger egress vehicles across the entire service. And there was, there was some education being done and notifications to people as they boarded the boat and before they boarded the boat about the engines needing to be off. They have already reached out to the coast guard and got clarification on the twelve hour rule for emergency trips. And that at times presents some challenges and additional time to confirm whether, if we will have transportation under emergency trips at night. And then the identifying and allocating funding to conduct service wide operational safety assessment. My knowledge, that still hasn't been done. And then identifying any funding to implement a service wide safety management system, which I'm not sure that has been done either. I think the last resemblance of an operational safety assessment, I believe, was done back in like two thousand and eight or so. And was referenced back in 2015 as part of some state legislations that put the medical lock boxes on there and called for a few other matters around safety. Those were the findings on there and just bringing that again back full circle and to see where the board, if anything, where you wanna ask that for follow up of the ferry service or hope to have something clarified.
Where's the Thompson?
Yeah.
No, but I mean, if they're, if they're gonna get rid of our night boat because of the safety, they should have to, I mean, it's been two years, it says. The last thing it says, it says the main state ferry DOC will identify and allocate funding to a service wide safety management system. And I mean, have they done that? It says they will. I mean, that's two years to implement safety. I mean, if they're so about safety, we should make sure that we hold their feet to the fire about making things as safe as possible, especially now during a pandemic. I mean, the only thing I can see that they've done is, is they closed one cabin and say, you know, only five people do a cabin or, you know, that's now, but when it was in the spring, they were only like people on one side. I mean, I haven't seen them going above and beyond on the cleaning. I don't know about anyone else, so. I mean, I think that whole safety thing was just a ruse to get the ferry to go back to a different schedule. I wanna see him go back to this paper. And they said there was things they could do to mitigate the factors of running after dark. Have they looked into any of those? I mean, what's the deal? I mean, as far as I can tell, the only thing that they've done out of this, make people shut their cars off.
Which they didn't enforce.
Which is a new rule and take our last ferries away.
And now take away our big boat during the, during a, where the weather isn't as good and put on the safe, as you mentioned, the safest route we have in the whole system.
Right. I mean, they should, the, the way the boats, like the way Andy did the letter, it should be about need and about profitability, not about how many cars they, they have as many trips. I mean, I'd like to, the part of his letter I liked is about the people that don't make the ferry. They should track that. Because I know on Allesboro, the last trip of the day leaves, if they leave two or three cars behind, they have enough time in their schedule to go back and pick them up. So it's never a problem for those people to not make it back to the island like it is for people on Vinyl Haven. So I mean, I don't understand why they need the bigger boat. But I, I mean, I think going back to the whole DOT, we should, we should send a letter to, you know, Bruce Van Nooyt or I can't remember the other guy's name.
Bill Palmer?
Yeah, I think, you see the one that's like under him? And just ask him where they stand on all this safety session. Cause he, when we, when we wrote to him, when he got appointed in two thousand and nineteen after this, because this came up before he got before Dana Mills won, and then he sent the same letter back to us the next year and agreed with it all. And I just wanna know where they stand on all these safety assessments and what they've done to look into those mitigating factors. That's my personal opinion. I don't know how we go about doing it, but I mean, just send this letter back and I, you know, basically say.
Have you done any of the things you said you would do?
Right, besides taking away our last boat for safety, what other safety measures have you done?
Right.
Bill, has any of those, those last two bullets come up at the advisory board meetings in the last few months? No.
What do you think we should do? I mean, how, how do we go about this? I mean, you're on the, the advisory board, but I mean, you guys have probably brought this up more than once when it first happened. So obviously they don't listen to you. So what do you think? Should we just try and send a letter about safety to the commissioner and the, and his, what is it, deputy, whatever they call them?
Yeah, well, you're absolutely right that they don't pay any attention to me. And they don't pay any attention to the people of Vinyl Haven, for that matter. When they had that hearing to discuss risk assessment, it was apparent to me that the only goal really was to get rid of the last two trips of the day and put them in the daytime. And they just tried one ruse after another to get that to happen. First, they talked about the lights for the, from boats and from like Frankie's lobster buying station. Then when that didn't pass muster, they talked about the crew being exhausted. And then when that didn't pass muster, it just went on and on until finally they just called the meeting off and, and went ahead and imposed a schedule change anyway, when in fact, they hadn't presented a persuasive argument. And the result was not only the daytime, the, the elimination of the winter schedule, but also the engines off policy, which, you know, vehicles have been riding on the ferry with the engines running when necessary for sixty years, and no one had ever, even once, cautioned anyone to turn their vehicles off. It wasn't until the coast guard was invited to ride along on the risk assessment trips that they noticed that the cars are running. So everything that emerged from this the risk assessment was a negative for Vinyl Haven. And certainly, things like the safety assessment and the allocation of funding ought to be brought to the attention of the commissioner and not waste our time trying to persuade lower level management people to do anything, I don't think.
O'Keagans is obviously not up to the job.
I mean, a lot of this stuff, I mean, they should have looked at if they wanted to. I mean, they have stuff in there about coast guard rules about wave fighting this and that. I mean, if they're really serious about safety. Although I don't see where that applies because when you're on a coast guard boat, you're at sea for days on end. And if you're on watch for eight hours in eight foot seas, you're on watch and on the ferry, you're in the pen for at least half of the run, you know, in calm water if I have it on. So I don't see where that has anything to do with the. Yeah. Neither here nor there, but we should send a letter asking them to, you know,
Yeah.
to revisit this and, and give us, give us an answer to these questions. Have, have you done this? What was the, what was the recommendation? If you haven't done it, why not?
I'd like to know why, how they can support that this is safer for us to have our biggest boat taken off at this time of year. I really want, I want them to answer that question, put it on the route that is the shortest and probably the safest.
We'll see what the letter yields about the Thompson and I can work on something about following up on, on these points that were raised in the root assessment.
But we should really, I mean, we should really ask them to track that, what you said about how many cars are left behind. You know, that's an unmet need. I would be curious to see if there's any unmet need on Allesboro.
It's been, it's been brought up many times on the, at the advisory board level and often met with, it just, you know, it can't happen. In some cases, some captains do to do that. And it's just that the data doesn't always go up and get put in, into a system.
Well, how do they know if someone needs a bigger boat or not if they don't know what they needed?
Right, exactly. Great question. Have we ever looked into our own private ferry service?
Time I've been here, not that I know of. I mean, only, only for medical potentially, we looked at it briefly for a medical boat, for emergency transport. Very, very different.
Yeah. It might be time to look into that.
I mean, but again, after the funding from the state.
Well, I know.
Make that up.
I know, I know.
How much taxes going?
And that, and that should also mention that's only for day to day operations. That doesn't include the capital projects that you go to our company for. You know.
Ten million dollar boat.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there you go.
I mean, but a lot, a lot of time they get some federal funding for that, which, you know, that would just increase our. I mean.
They're gonna, they're gonna increase our cut, they're gonna.
The only way, the only way you could do it is if it was a private thing.
Yeah, no, it'd have to be a private.
Not, not a town owned thing.
No, 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 not a town.
And then it would be like, it would be like market venue, where you'd be paying over a hundred dollars.
The Casco Bay Lines, which is a private, you know, I think boat tickets.
That's owned by the city of Portland, right? No?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Portrait of a Graduate. You're up, Vaughn.
Hi. So I wanted to just give a very brief update on what's been going on with Portrait of a Graduate since we spoke to you last meeting. As you can see by this slide, we have been working on communications and thank you so much to Gabe for being part of our group and helping. So we have this logo and tagline, and this will be kind of, you'll see this more and more. We're gonna be getting information out in the wind and the various social media channels, really trying to engage the community and get them to participate. And so in terms of participation, and, and we're into this sort of research phase where we're really talking with people. We've started in the school, the high school students have taken a survey, almost all of them have taken it. And we will be doing focus groups with different groups of students, starting after the holidays. And those will be done primarily by Jess Woods, who is the school counselor consultant who helps the high school kids with post-secondary planning. And so it's great because she knows them, this information is really relevant to her work with them. And we are hoping that they'll feel comfortable with her and be able to really kind of open up about, about how it is for them. And so that will start in January. And then similarly, we're working on a survey for the adults in the community. And the survey will be structured so that it's like, you know, just basic information that we would all answer. And then, you know, if you're an alumni, here are three questions for you. If you're a business owner, here are three more questions. But it'll, it'll sort of intuitively, based on what you say, bring you to the next group of questions because so many of us wear so many hats. We wanna kind of hear from folks from all their different ways in which they are members of the community. So that adult survey will be launching in early January. And then we will also be starting to host focus groups in the community. So you may well be asked to be part of a focus group. We were thinking maybe the Board of Selectmen could be their own focus group, but we'll sort of see. We're working on the best ways to do outreach and both being COVID safe and recognizing people's time. But there are several constituent groups that we're trying to reach out to. And so we just wanna make sure that you know about this, even though we talked to you about it last month. We're gonna come and just give you a little update each month. And then to the extent that, that you start to hear about this, that your friends start to hear about it, if you could just encourage people to participate, if people have questions, they can reach out to me or to Gabe and, or any of the people on the committee. And, and we'll just keep kind of bringing it to you, putting it in front of you. And I think one thing that makes me really excited, listening to all of the other seemingly disparate things that you all were talking about tonight, is this sort of steady beat of like, is this the best way to do things? Should we be thinking about doing things differently? Is this sustainable? How does this work connect with this other work going on over here? And I think the, the relationship between the school and the, and the community, the connection between our students that we have now and then when, when they become adults and are, are members and leaders of the community, this is all related. And so it's really a, a great chance to sort of help provide some cohesion around all these different efforts that are happening. So welcome, any questions or any ideas, if anybody has any, and otherwise I am done. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Okay, new business, authorized and signed departments, public works, facility design and bill contract.
So included in your packets, a copy of the contract, a meeting before or following the meeting, the last meeting we had. We've also received kind of an overview of, heard in about the general conditions and S, cost, overall cost estimate. Which, again, when we started with selecting them a month or two ago, the estimate was for up to eight hundred and fifty thousand.
The estimate was for up to eight hundred and fifty thousand after the site visit and getting a better look at everything that needs to happen. Few modifications as of right now. Closer estimate is at seven eighty-nine. There are a few things that they're anticipating seeing changes in like steel prices. So the sooner this is signed, the sooner we're likely to lock in the price they estimated. So hopefully there's. And I think Jim, Jim is on the call, so there's questions for Jim with Sheridan and corporate with the construction company. You can answer anything you might have. I know the one thing that came up in my review was to the insurance company. About builders' risk insurance for the contract he's carrying it for the work that's being done. Clarified it's not for the total building with, with the work and the building. So. The value of that building is something and the salt shed is something that will have to, will have to get. To carry that through the period of time. Other than that, I didn't see them that jumped out. He's estimating ninety days from the time they start doing the work to be able to.
There was an additional agreement in that. PDF that you sent us for a subcontractor. Those costs are included in that seventy-nine, correct?
I do believe, Jim, all the subcontractor costs for electrical and plumbing and all of that, that's included in the seven eighty-nine, right?
Yeah, Andy, can you hear me? Yeah, um, that, that price is. Complete based upon the scope of work that I provided. So all the subcontractors work. Mechanical, the electrical, the framing, the painting, that's all included in that cost.
I will, we authorize the town manager to sign the contract for the. Public works facility.
From the time this is signed and as of today, Jim, you were thinking. It'd be what, within the next like thirty days? Some of it depends on material and art finishing, getting things set up on site. But you were estimating what, within thirty days or so?
Correct. Yeah, we're, we're guessing it's probably going to be the end of January first to February by the time we're. On the island with materials to start.
I made a motion. Seconded by Donapool. Any further discussion? Personnel policy review.
I know we've talked about this in a couple of different iterations. We haven't had any formal proposals. I think there's enough change. I just, I think included portions of the policy that have the changes as I was going through it. One of the big ones that kind of spurred this right now is that the. Means earned paid leave law goes into effect January first. I'm not going to have a huge, huge impact on us. But there are some regular part-time folks. And it even includes the intermittent part-timers. For every forty hours work, the law says an employee must. Earn at least one hour of paid leave. That's something that we'll, we'll have to come up with ways to track that for the part-timers and volunteer responders and intermittent workers. So what to do, just a little bit to track that. There's nothing in our policy that would. Say anything about it. So at the very least, we need to update it in regards to that new law. A few other suggestions that we look at, that have been since two thousand and fourteen, since it had a last revision. Last, I think, within this past year, we've added the optional vision plan for employees. We can include that in there. Then the other big one I wanted to have. Reviewed is the work, employee conduct work rules. There's a bunch of stuff included in that right now. Like work, workplace. The sexual harassment, the drug policies. Things that, there's a bunch of them that are within that, that we don't have policies individually on some of those things that some, some places do. There've been some changes to such certain parts of what's underneath the. Conduct rules that I think should be reviewed, just to make sure they're still in compliance with state and federal rules. I might not have put them, but I didn't have any proposed changes. Those were the big ones, but just I guess looking for your. Acknowledgment or blessing to be able to work with our attorneys to make sure that the person, that policy isn't kind of. Getting compliant with all that and to review the new unpaid leave and any of the other things.
Well, I mean, especially when we have some people that have. Licenses to drive big trucks. I mean, the drug thing that goes hand in hand with that doesn't, they have to have those. Tests to get those licenses before it's not a town thing, that's like a federal or state thing, right? I mean, because that's what probably would maybe be the biggest liability on us if someone was. Yeah, just run everything by the lawyers and make sure that we're covered.
I'll reach out to them to look at that. And then just circling back, or I guess kind of presenting, I don't have any full policy or ordinance drafted yet, but. I know one of the things. One of the things you wanted me to look at was. Any sort of property tax programs, the benefit, you know, that would help alleviate the tax burden on seniors or those on fixed incomes. The statutes, state statutes do have a couple provisions regarding municipal tax programs. One's a tax deferral program for senior citizens. The other one, a little bit more of a general tax assistance program. Both, you'd have to create parameters that are not. They don't go to real, real depth. I mean, it's kind of a broad statute in terms of what you can do with it. Though I did include a couple of examples that I got from feedback from other managers on that house programs. There was an example of each of these. One is the chapter nine oh eight A, the other one nine oh seven A, so. Two different programs. I've gotten others as well. So just kind of checking in on that to see if that's something you want me to pursue. I do think, you know, we would just kind of go through, looking at both those programs generally, the other towns have them. We do a quick run through of the property holder owners. Local addresses. In, in the homestead program and kind of get an idea of how many people will, you know, properties might qualify for this. To get a kind of a budget. A budget number on that. I don't think it would be a huge number, but I don't know. Right now, without going through that list to even start to guess, we're not going to have all the information if you need income and all that kind of stuff, but I think we could. Kind of go through it and get a good, a good idea anyway. So that's something you want us to continue to pursue. There are means to kind of create that.
Is that the thing that the legislature passed?
That was, so they passed a law on the foreclosure process. So people that are over a certain age and have a certain income threshold. The town, they made it so that municipalities don't foreclose and. And go, you know, kind of evict people that there is an additional process and kind of steps that we have to go through when they qualify for that. So far, we haven't had that line up yet. So that, that's something again, if you want me to continue to look through, I imagine, you know, was something we could include on the annual town meeting and have effective for next, next tax year potentially.
In addition. It was a couple of town meetings ago, someone brought up. The amount that we do charge in interest for late property taxes. And I brought up as a goal of my own a couple of years ago and then dropped the ball. But basically. You know, is there a way that for, especially for residents? If they're behind their property taxes, if they set up some sort of program for payment back, not paying the full seven percent. And I'm not interested in somebody's second home necessarily having a reduced interest rate, but.
Yeah, I don't think, I think the only thing you could do is within the parameters of these two statutes. I haven't seen anything that would allow you to charge a different interest rate for different. Whatever, whatever the qualification is, income based, age based, whatever it is. It's kind of an all or nothing thing on the interest rate, I believe. I thought I was going to look further into that.
Can't we as a town though decide to not?
You set the interest rate up.
They give an individual patient like, okay, you're old, but you set up a payment plan. We're just going to ask you to pay the.
You know, you'll pay one percent interest.
There's no waiver process. Individual ones brought it across and said like, it's not like the.
There's a, there's an abatement process for hardship, which is a very different thing. You can't afford your property tax bill. You know, generally, I mean, if we, we can go through the list. I mean, I know generally, I think the one, you know. People that you're maybe thinking of aren't generally on that list of late, they're usually some of the first people to pay.
No, but I mean, but there is a process if they couldn't pay it for an abatement.
Yeah, if you're on an income base, you know, can't afford the property taxes, there is the hardship waiver you could fill out for abatement. And I think, you know, again, if you want, I think these are some good programs, ordinance stuff there that other towns have in place. There's. There's even, I forget which one, I think it's the tax assistance one. One of the two allows kind of an opportunity for. You know, kind of compensating volunteer hours. If you have people volunteering with the, with the town on projects that we have. To kind of earn, earn credit towards your tax bill even. But that was kind of an interesting way, maybe a way to kind of encourage people to. Serve on some of the boards.
That is, that is a very.
I think there's something there if you want me to pursue that.
At least, at least. Reported town manager.
The, the holiday hours, I should have brought that up at the last meeting, just to give staff kind of a heads up, but. With Christmas and this week, if you notice that the executive order. I've come out of the White House with to recognize Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, the special holiday starting this year. Our policy doesn't say it recognizes special holidays outright, just lists the holidays to be. So some places, you know, kind of had a thing where, well, they weren't anticipating it, but it's written in their. Policies or union contracts that they follow all federal holidays. So it works. So in the past, you guys have offered. And allowed or, you know, provided that paid time off for both. Some cases, New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve, and sometimes even the day after Christmas. Asking, I guess, if you were required, if you'll entertain the possibility of. Time off, paid time off for the. For those that get it, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve this year.
And you headed in the personnel policy to add those days.
But what happens if a federal policy changes next year? Take it out? Or it's just going to be in there?
I, I don't think giving employees two extra days.
Take them back as several holidays on, probably Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. I don't have a problem with that.
I think in the, in the, get away from the recommendation here for this year on these two ones, but in the policy. You know, even the consideration, there's a lot of people that either forget or, you know, don't realize we aren't open on. All, some of the other holidays that have, you know, turned into floating holidays for some places, other towns or businesses, which are the. Columbus, you know, Columbus Day or Indigenous, Indigenous People Day. President's Day, MLK Day, there's some of those ones that have been, or we've recognized that other places have kind of created these floating ones. So that was kind of a one thought I had in the personnel policy was to kind of take some of those holidays plus maybe these two and kind of. In the future, let the employees decide that we'd be open on certain ones, but let them decide if they want to work it or use it somewhere else.
I'm fine with that too.
So what, you're, but say next year, Christmas is on a Sunday. Or a Monday and Christmas Eve is on a Sunday, they're not going to get a different day off, right? It's not going to be like. Those federal holidays that they make on Monday, you know, no matter what, like Halloween, King Day. It's just going to be like, this year it's on Thursday, they'll get Thursday off, if it's on a Saturday, they already got the day off, so it won't matter. I mean, we're not going to give them. A special, I mean, not that I really care, but I was just curious, like, we're not going to give them the twenty-second off if it works out to be, you know, the. Last day before Christmas that they're working. I'm just curious how that works.
Yeah, it depends on the holiday. Certain ones in the policy now say if it falls on a. Saturday, you get the Friday off, falls on a Sunday, you get the Monday off, and then the transfer station and library. Are open on different days, so, you know, the library on a Saturday and the transportation on a Sunday, so they have a slightly different. It's within the policy now when, when they fall on certain days, so we can look at that and.
I'm just curious how worried.
I think in that case, for me at least, we just.
As long as it's the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
Yes, if you're giving them Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve off and they happen to fall on a weekend, you just let them use that as an additional day somewhere else in the year. That would be my suggestion, the floating holidays is it.
Oh, no, I mean, no, if New, if New Year's Eve is a Saturday. It's a weekend and that's the way that, yeah.
Do you want to deal with this year's for, for right now and then deal with the other?
For this year, for this year, I'm fine with maybe being closed.
Because if it's like, if it's like someone that needs to come up here and it's December twenty-ninth or thirtieth, you know, and that's the last day and they're. Planning on coming and paying something that needs to be paid by the end of the year or registering or doing something and they're closed, that might scoop someone up.
Well, we would have to advertise it as a town saying, hey, we're going to be closing these days.
Yeah, this year I'm fine with.
Yeah, that's fine. We can, we can table.
Yeah, future years can be tabled before now, I'm fine, yes. Which is what we've done the past several years anyway.
I thought we were closed on the twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth.
Last year was both days, the year before, I think it was a half day on one of them.
This year, the twenty-sixth will be a Saturday.
For this year, the Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, that's, that's fine.
The tax exemption. Appeal. That's with Hurricane Allen Foundation that we met virtually with the judge yesterday. And I think he's got everything he thinks he needs to be able to make a determination. Out of all of that. And so he's hoping to have something sooner rather than later, and I think everyone agreed, he included us. They didn't want to see us all there again on this same matter. A year because we were in there almost a year ago yesterday talking with him. So hopefully, he's hoping to have that sooner rather than later. On that appeal for the exemption request. The strategic plan, key performance indicators, Matt's been meeting with some of the department heads on that and will continue to work with them. Kind of creating these, these metrics to kind of share and, and share with the community, whether they're tied to the budget numbers or tied to goals that you have. Just to kind of help share and kind of keep some of these things kind of front and center on some of our meetings or some quarterly updates, however we decide with what frequency to. Present that going forward, but you know, it's kind of a way for us to see how, again, what the, the work. Staff are doing is connected to the goals you've kind of set out, what the community set out to see done. Hopefully. Provide some clarity on why we're heading in the directions we are, why we do what we do in some cases. There was a. I'm a stakeholder meeting, you might recall the. The ongoing review or consideration of a high-speed ferry. That would be in Penobscot Bay and Arcadia Alliance Group. Got a stakeholder group that they've been working with and includes folks from the DOT, the Ferry Service. Phil, I think you attend those meetings as well, so they got Advisory Board representatives. There's people that fill out that, that state, that group that include folks from some of the universities, some, I think someone from. Navy Maritime Academy, I think sits on that as well. So it's kind of a good rounded group. The idea is that there's some federal money there potentially to help do shovel ready projects. This is a project that could provide. Jobs and, and improve, you know, benefits to the Penobscot Bay area for some of the island communities. And my Allesboro, I think, has really kind of led that charge in kind of seeing. You know, kind of spurring this. Their idea is to build two vessels of ultimately. One primarily serving, you know, that portion, Allesboro area portion of the bay, and then another one that could serve the larger part of Penobscot Bay. There's a lot of unknowns, just trying to understand right now, you know, what might the. The will be to use something like this, you know, the demand to use something like this, you know, I'm trying to understand. Cost of all this.
See the main state ferry service saying we can't find enough people to run our service. What makes you think we can support this if they want them to run it? I can't see them taking on anything actually they act. It'll be interesting to see what happens.
I think, you know, we've raised that, Kerry and I signed on a letter of support for this concept before it went. As a proposal to the ferries, to the state. From the emergency services perspective. But yeah, that's been one of our biggest challenges, is reliable, someone we know we can call and say, hey, you're going to, yeah, we're going to take it, we need to go, yep, I'll be right there. It's hard and every, not every EMS call is the same and, and you know, this was potentially something, so if available from six P M to six A M. For, you know, particularly for emergency transport is really what we were most. For, you know, particularly for emergency transport is really what we were most interested in, when we signed that letter. So there's other, other islands and other interests to see, see something like this put in place. The, the list here, you know, was asked of the seven people on that call, they have reached out to other islands and other stakeholders, and will be continued outreach to find out, you know, what people think about it, but they asked on a scale of one to five, five being the most important of these things on this list are, you know, do we feel would be beneficial, you know, to have a boat like this to meet these things? And so, again, with five being the most important, you see the highest rated things in there being medical transport, off-island, access to off-island services. You know, and then the commuter service, evening trips. Some of the lower ones on there were the more, you know, the ability to have more frequent trips, and there was a lot of concern about what that would be, what that would do for the island, you know, socially. And then the tourism aspect from the seven on the call, didn't feel it was a high, highly important reasoning to have this, this vessel. The, the biggest thing, I think, at the end of it was, there's still so much that's unknown. There's no idea where, where it would serve, what ports it would go to and from exactly, on schedule it would go, the cost of the per trip, you know, to, to be on this vessel. Where's it gonna dock? There was still a lot to, just, so, in order for them to kind of be confident in going forward with any of that. And they really kind of want to also get an idea of, will it be used and in what ways? They know full well that if emergency transport in the evening is something that people, the island communities want to see as guaranteed service, they know that's twice the crew, right? You have daytime and nighttime crew, if it's an operate, definitely the daytime, you definitely need nighttime crew. So that, all that was kind of approached, and I know they've been talking about it and looking at it, and, you know, with the people that are on that committee to research this, so. More of that to come, but is there any feedback generally or questions on that that Phil or I can answer?
We said there's too many questions that they need to hear first before we can have any questions.
Cute idea.
It is legislative season, and there's a couple of things that Midcoast Managers Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and a couple of things that came up in the air. Pretty volunteer firefighters, there is a bill they're expecting to see put in that would give them tax excise tax exemption for the vehicles, those vehicles are their primary response vehicles, and registered with the municipality they serve for. A bill that would expand the definition of working waterfront and various programs or certain programs to include boatyards. I guess certain programs don't include that right now. I started looking at, and if there is a working waterfront tax program, only a couple of properties out here utilize that. Similar to, created, I don't want to say the same as, but it's like the current use programs for tree growth, open space and, and farmland, working waterfront, and another program the state has created. Whether that's something that could be taken more advantage of out here by some of the fishermen, fishermen that still own property, and if not, not as beneficial in some, in some ways financially, as opposed to some of the other ones. There are, you know, the, the reduction in valuation is a lot lower relative to those other ones. You know, so if that's something that I was exploring to see, if the bill's going in about working waterfront, if it was gonna include improvements or changes to this tax program, that would benefit a fair amount of people out here potentially. The Tiff District, I had a couple of phone calls today and I have a couple of emails out for legal interpretation on that, you know, what can be done and how do you change it? And, you know, some of that's possible, the, the question about expenditures from the town share, you know, the ten percent we retain each year is in a Tiff account, called the Tiff account, like a savings account right now. It's supposed to only be used in the district, and there's, again, looking for the legal, legal interpretation of it, it looks like it could be spent outside of the defined district as long as it's related to, you know, if, if only a mile or two miles of the road, and the North Haven Road is the district. My thought is, can we use any of that money to improve the landing at Thoroughfare? Because without landing equipment at Thoroughfare, you can't get to the district.
Right.
And so my hope is that we might be able to utilize some of that, to think about using some of that money to help make improvements up there. But I just need to kind of figure that out, but also.
Because whenever they need to do anything, they need to line the crane up there for any of the work, I mean, that, without that, there is no district. I can't see how, I mean.
That was one aspect of it. The other one is the agreement in the, as, as the mill rate goes up, the revenues go up for the, for the projects, and the tax rate continues to go up a little bit more because of that. And so I think that's just something to understand and figure out how, how we may be able to go forward, and I think it sounds like it might be a negotiation between us and the Box Island Wind.
Is there a way to cap it at just a certain number, so it was certain percentage, like, you know? Well, when it first started, say it was ten thousand to fifty thousand, can we just cap it at that instead of it going, you know?
Yeah, when it was projected. When it was projected, it was projected at a hundred and twenty-three thousand a year, I think.
Well, I thought it was a hundred something like that.
And right now, I think this year's like a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, if we could cap it at a hundred and twenty-five, that would be good.
I think, you know, just trying to understand how we go about doing that and hopefully have more of that. And hopefully, maybe even something before next tax year, but that might be a little ambitious, but we'll see if we can work towards that as the goal. Through ordinance review finally, so the commissioners have had a, one or two meetings now specifically around the ordinance, sewer use ordinance. And a lot of time discussing the equivalent user section. And there were a couple of odd, odd exceptions that were in there to the sewer use equivalent user formulas and the ability to kind of have a reduce, reduction in your equivalent user count based on certain things, and it, it didn't sound, it was hard to apply, you know, and so they, they have spent a lot of time talking about that and going through the, the list. We've been having more frequent meetings on that, to work through that and hope to have some sort of revision presented in the next few months. And I am trying to go back through more thoroughly on the loan payoff amounts that we have. We were connected, those came matured and came due two years ago. And so we've got a few, wrote off a couple of the lower balances, I started looking at it, and some of the people that are on that pay regularly, never on a list we have. The last payments might have been made in like two thousand and twelve, and so the question I had was, is the, is the, is the amount that's on there sure is outstanding more of a residual balance? And it was just, every year it adds to it because it was timing of when it was paid, and there might have been something in a formula on a spreadsheet that made it look like there was still money, and then every year it continues to compound with interest. So I wanted to go back and try and map out some of those, I think it was like maybe fifteen accounts, fifteen, twenty accounts, so I gotta still look at that a little more closely to see if it's actually owed, or, some of them are clear, the principal was never paid off, but some of them, between principal and interest did pay it and haven't paid since two thousand and twelve, and so it was, it doesn't quite look at upright, so just continue to look at that. Other than that, budget planning, moving ahead, and we are scheduled for the twenty-eighth, for this building to have its server switched on and, and functioning, they gotta put that firewall in that we purchased last, the last.
No, please, no.
So that, that should all be, hopefully, up and running, twenty-eighth, our goal was for the new year to have the new bookkeeping, the updated bookkeeping software functioning and laptops running again, or running for the, those that are getting those.
We can't do it on the thirty-first.
We can't do it on the thirty-first?
Do it on the thirty-first. It's like, it's a couple of days, a couple of days there, but hopefully, whether it works out for the twenty-eighth and then to come out and do that, and that can be off of our place.
So that's something that they can support from away, right, once it took the.
Yeah, they're, right now, they're, they're working on the hardware and building a lot of it right now at their site, and then they can bring the hardware here and.
I was just making sure, you know, that secret, we don't have to have them come out, I mean, most of those things are.
Most of the time it is, they don't have to come out.
Right, but I mean, I, I understand that.
How about reported members? Hopefully, through the reported members.
Did you check about that?
I looked at it, I know it's been trimmed, I've looked at it, I didn't frankly see, I mean, we've got other poles and stuff that are close in other areas, but no, I haven't reached out to talk about it since the last meeting.
Do we have anything in our town ordinances about idle engines?
Not that I know of.
I was downtown today, sitting in my truck, waiting for my wife and sons to come out. Sitting behind someone who had their truck running the entire time, well, they went and did their shopping, came back out, checked their truck, went back in, did some more shopping, came back out, went back in again. It drives me crazy, but I'm sure a lot of people don't share my view of that. I just don't see the point in people sitting in their vehicles, or not even sitting in them, leaving them running, not just downtown, but at the school. When all the kids are lined up outside playing, waiting for people to pick them up, I just, I don't like it, I don't think we should be doing it, but that's just my personal take.
And I was, I know for sure, the ferry boat has their policy on.
Which they don't enforce.
On that, but other than that, there's no ordinance that we have.
See, I mean, I don't know how, it's kind of enforced something like that, we can't even.
Well, yeah, we can't get anything enforced on it.
I mean, and in general, this time of year, I get my vehicle warmed up, I go in the grocery store, the last thing I'm gonna do is turn off the vehicle, and then we should get price it again. Gas is cheap.
A constituent, a couple, a couple of days ago, asked me to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen the fact that there is a camper parked on private property here in my neighborhood, and it ran for at least fourteen hours straight, the engine, not the components, but rather the vehicle's engine for fourteen hours straight, at least once, if not several times, and I told her, as far as I knew, there were no ordinance. There was no ordinance that would prohibit that, but I certainly agree with D W. But unless there's an ordinance or some other way of enforcing.
Isn't that, well, it's an opposite thing with a, you can't have campers up here, can you? Private property.
You can have, you can have private property, you can have private campsites. There's certainly plenty of campers that are scattered about, you can have it permitted as your primary structure if you want, but, you know, you do need to get the permit to do it that way.
But most of those people have like power, I don't really don't run them all night, I mean. Most of those things have lookups for power, and I mean, my boat has a lookup to look into shore power.
Anyway, the bottom line is, there's no ordinance, right?
Well, they put sugar in the gas tank, that's a good ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not recommending it.
Yeah, I would never, of course, recommend such a thing, but that would stop an engine from running quite quickly. Okay, and me also to report members. Okay, I move with John. Seconded by Donald Poole, all those are paid by.